17th, 2025 is called to order at 7:04. And I just want to make a personal note that my dad would have been 97 today if he was alive. So first item.
He's yelling at you to speak into my mic.
I'm gonna like get a little head beat.
You're gonna get, yeah.
Yeah.
Like Janet Jackson.
There are better, there are better analogies than that, I think. But thanks. I'll try to make sure I don't have any malfunctions here. So first, next item on the general call. Dr. Benoit.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Ms. Ramos.
Here.
Ms. Menard.
Here.
Chair is here and Ms. DeWalt's here is not going to be attending this evening. She's not feeling well. Next item on, we have no minutes to review, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. So next item on the agenda, disclosure. Does anybody on the planning board have any potential conflicts or matters to disclose on the matters before the board this evening?
Well, I'm just noting that I'm recusing myself from the, one of the, that's not in this instance.
No, that would be, that would be when the topic comes up.
Okay, already.
Same thing.
Thank you.
Next item, disclosure notice. Does any planning board member need to disclose any ex parte communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the board this evening? Hearing none. So our voting members currently will be Dr. Benoit, Dr. Roberts, Mr. Porter, and Mr. Menard. We'll change that as needed when there's recrusal. Okay. So for the first item, we have the request for extension. The Buxton Street Conservation Development. Can you give us a summary of that, please?
Mr. Chairman, the Buxton Street Conservation Development was here approximately one year ago. They had applied for a condo development. I believe it was six two-unit buildings. And they are here asking for an extension. Pretty straightforward.
Mr. Chair, I'll be recusing myself from this item.
From this item?
Yes.
Okay, you'll need to sit down there. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rafael Manzo, counsel on behalf of the applicant here. I think this one is hopefully very straightforward. The decision approving the applicant's master plan was recorded in the town's land evidence records on August 17th, 2023, under Rhode Island General Laws 452339C7I. An approved master plan is vested for a period of two years, bringing us until three days from now with the, with the right to extend for two one-year extensions upon written request by the applicant, who must appear before the planning board before the annual review. That brings us to tonight where we're simply just seeking our by right extension.
And this is the, you haven't previously taken any?
There have been no previous extensions.
Okay, so this will be the first of the two you're allowed.
This is the first of the two.
Gotcha. Any questions from the board or anything? No? Okay. I want to make note that for, we're voting on this, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the.
Before you do that? Need to change the voting members for this, for this particular topic. It'll be Dr. Benoit, Dr. Roberts, Mr. Porter, Ms. Ramos, and myself with Mr. Menard recusing.
Make a motion to approve the requested extension.
Do we have a motion to, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, roll call vote. Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Dr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Ramos?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you.
Good work. Good job.
Mr. Menard will rejoin us here. Next item on the agenda, the pre-application concept review for Marshall Platt, 55 Greenville Road. If you could give us a summary of that, Ms. Carrulo.
Mr. Chairman, the Marshall Platt is a subdivision that had been before the planning board several years ago. At the time, I think it was classified as a major subdivision because of the change in the statutes. It's now considered a minor subdivision with a request for a zone change. There's a, there's a substantial parcel that the applicant would like to subdivide to create four new lots for development while retaining the majority of his property as an individual lot. There's also a request that's not directly related to the planning boards, more to the council, to acquire an abutting piece of town property. The attorney is here to make a presentation, but the, the lots that are being proposed in the zone change is consistent with the adjoining subdivision and platted properties to the north and to the west. So while it will require a comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use map, I would say that it is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood in the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Partington for the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Carrulo. As, as the planner has stated, the matter was back here in 2021, it was approved. It's essentially the same plan of the proposal going forward, or would be going forward now, is essentially the same plan with the exception of how this strip of land that's owned by the town would be received. Basically, on the corner of Village and Greenville, you've got this strip of land that would basically run the whole length of what the frontage would be on Village Way pursuant to the subdivision if it went to RU zone, if the council granted our request. So without that land, without that frontage, and I checked the ordinance and I know that there's a lot of cities and towns that have different ways of dealing with corner lots. I didn't see anything in your ordinance that, so I think in the absence of that, you probably get two frontage requirements or 100, 100 feet in, in the RU zone if it was granted. So I initially had talked to the planner about a simple reinstatement, given the fact that it was approved. Not only was the preliminary approved, but there was a positive advisory on the zone change. And as, as Mr. Carrulo has also stated, now it's changed and that would be a minor. If we would start over again, it would be a minor for preliminary before this board. And it would be also a request for the advisory. Then with preliminary, we could go back to the council and then back for final here. The only, a couple of things I want to mention. The first was the possibility of, of a reinstatement, and I know that's, that's within your purview to do that. I guess the only difference or the question would be at this point is, is how that previous, that previous approval presupposed that there was going to be a merger of that strip of land owned by the town. And it was not a purchase. It was actually, it was going to be kind of a swap. The town was going to get a utility easement across the back of what would be lot, I guess, lot 173, which is the Marshall's lot now. So I, and I also don't know, I'll be honest, I really don't know even in a reinstatement, how the recommendation would go forward, the advisory. It's, it usually deals with the plan itself, a reinstatement. But if, if, if we don't, if we don't, if not able to work out and arrange it with the town about possibly a swap for that parcel, for the, for our frontage on Village Way, for the utility easement, then we'd be in a position where we'd be coming to the board, not only for the advisory and the preliminary, but also for a request for dimension relief for the frontage on Village Way. Which in essence, you know, without, again, without, if you look at the map, without that strip, we would, I think we'd be both zero on frontage on, for that front lot. Certainly, yeah.
Sorry to interrupt. It would be helpful if you could point.
Oh, yeah.
Illustrate not only the, the town land you're talking about, but also the easement you were talking about, the utility easement.
And I, by the way, I have someone here from Insight who did the plan, and I can, if I'm, if I'm incorrect, which I often am. The, the, the town strip would be, and it's right here, it goes down here to this corner from what I can recall. Thanks, Paul. And the easement, I believe, would run across with the, with the red.
Oh, it goes, okay. It goes north-south.
Yes.
Okay.
So in essence, this would, all this is taken out by, by the town land. It's strangely shaped lots, about 6,000 plus square feet.
Is there any history as to why that town owns that very small sliver, long sliver of land?
I, I don't know. I.
It just seems odd.
It, it does.
I mean, unless it was part of something else prior to Village Way being there, I don't know.
So I, I know this is an informal concept review and I'm just kind of, I'm throwing some ideas out there that the, the most opportune, obviously, for the applicant would be a reinstatement of the plan. With the, with the understanding that we would again go back to the town about that swap, so to speak, for the, the utility easement. And I, I did review your ordinance and I, it's pretty much, I know the statute is the same, but I know that it's getting, it's within your purview to reinstate. I, I had a conversation, Mr. Carrulo, about it. We didn't really come to any kind of agreement or disagreement on it. I just wanted to throw it out there as a possibility because of the previous approval and the positive recommendation on, for the zone change.
Mr. Carrulo? What is your opinion on that, on the reinstatement?
Well, so I don't think the reinstatement advances the application any further because under the new statute, this would come in as a minor at preliminary. And the reinstatement would be for a master plan because this would be a major.
It would go, so it would go back to being under the old rules.
It's six one-half dozen, it, well, it would because that's, that's what it was reviewed on, right?
Right.
I mean, so.
That's a good point, Mr. Carrulo. That's true.
It's, it, it would be the same outcome. With regard to the frontage and the acquisition of that property, the lot that we're referring to, which is 173, is a pre-existing lot. So it doesn't require frontage on, on Village Way. I mean, it's certainly the, the applicant's prerogative if they want to acquire the property from the town. I have no objection to that, but it's not necessary. And what it ends up resulting in, and I, I think, I think Mr. Carlson is here and he, he has designed the plan is lot, proposed lot four. And that's the lot with the angle on it. Paul, if you can, yeah. So that lot right there is short, a very, very minor bit of frontage, I don't know, three, four feet maybe. I can't read it on my plan because it's so, so tiny, but the acquisition of that frontage lot accomplishes making that proposed lot four a fully conforming lot. Even if the town council wasn't to agree to relinquish that property, they certainly have the ability to request a very, very minor dimensional variance. I think it might even be under the new building official purview to grant that variance.
Under the modifications.
It's so minor. So I mean, there are way, it's really up to the applicant how they want to apply.
Well, my only, and, and again, if, if, if the town's position is that even notwithstanding the subdivision, that we don't, we're not required to have our 100.
Yeah, you're, I, I don't read it that way. I read, with that property being there, I read that as only having frontage on Greenville Road because it does not abut Village Way technically. There's an, there's an intervening town property there.
That is true.
And it's a lot. If it was right-of-way, I would agree with the interpretation if that, if that intervening lot was part of the Village Way right-of-way, it would be providing frontage, but it doesn't. It's a freestanding lot. It's got a lot number.
But, but going that route, it, it seems to imply that it's not an issue because of the Greenville Road frontage and the fact that they don't have frontage on Village Way, but that's fine.
That's, because it's a lot.
So you take that step and you move forward, you say, okay, now we're going to move forward one step, and then the town says, okay, you can acquire the land. That, that doesn't change anything, right?
It changes nothing other than it, it, it provides relief for that minor frontage deviation on lot four.
Which I think under the modification statute probably could be done administratively.
I believe it can.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know about the rest of it. I, I just see that strip of land as being an anomaly and it's, it's one of those things that we come across every now and then, some historical things. We don't even know why it's like this. And again, it's up to the town council, but it seems like just make the problem go away.
I, I did, Mr. Chairman, I did research the deeds. I read the deeds and there was some transfer of, of a form of corporation. And it was related, I think it was related to some property on the other side of Greenville Road that the town also owns, which is open space property.
Oh, yeah.
It, I don't know why. Maybe it was just under common ownership when that property got transferred and it got transferred as part of that tran, you know, the, the, the real estate transfer to the town for that open space. But there's nothing in the deed that preserves it, that defines it as far as being for right-of-way, for an easement, nothing. This is just a transfer.
You know, you don't. I'm not speaking for you. Let's say, if I were in your shoes, I would want that problem to go away just in case, you know, the town, some, some, you know, 10 years from now, the town says, well, we own this land. We're going to, we're going to put some stuff on it. And you're like, no, 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 don't do that, you know?
Well, it's, it's right, it couldn't hurt. I mean, if in fact, if they were willing to give up the easement for it, the utility easement, then it's just more land and it can solve the problem of that corner.
Right.
Also, with respect to the, I appreciate Mr. Carrulo's remarks about the surrounding area. I found that to be true as well. As far as the future land use map goes, I got to be honest, I, I tried to, I tried to zero that in. And, and I think it's, I think it is low density, low to medium density zone now. And if we go to 20,000 square foot lots, you'd say, and that's a bump up.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So, I mean, yeah, whatever, I mean, that's something we would, you know, we would have to deal with as far as any amendment to the, to the comprehensive plan, the land, future land use map. So I, I understand Mr. Carrulo's comments about, you know, about how reinstatement, I guess it's true, it was reviewed under, but it was given preliminary approval though. It wasn't just master plan. So I, I am just giving it a shot, you know? I mean.
Irrelevant to me. If it's a reinstatement, it's a reinstatement.
Well, they, I'm just, and again, as, as part of the.
I think the, the holdup and I've been going, I, I've had discussions before, before the current attorney was involved with the, with the previous attorney in that the process, if it was a reinstatement, the next step would be to go to the town council to get approval for that land transfer.
But the, well, yeah, because then.
Yeah, for the zone change, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, but if, but since we're currently under new rules and this is a pre-application, the reinstatement is not even a, it's not an action we'd be taking to.
Not to see.
Oh, no, no, oh, no, no, no. I, again, I, I use these pre-apps to try to get an idea, especially with a project like this, and there's a couple of options. And one that is, that is a little more expedient, if it's available. I mean, I, when I saw that, I, I read the previous decision and again, it seems to be, it's the same, it's essentially the same project. So, but again, that's, that's, that would be in, within your purview to accept or deny it. I can discuss it further with my client.
Mr. Porter?
Yeah. Mark, the previous stipulations that we had in the previously approved preliminary plans, have those all been taken care of in this new one? That's been, that's being presented tonight?
The only one that I know of, I didn't mean to react to Mr. Carrulo, I'm sure you can, but the only, the only one that, that I, I know of would be the, the merging of the lots was discussed. But an actual, an actual condition was that the right-of-way, the utility easement.
Okay.
Be granted. I didn't mean to speak, Mr. Carrulo.
No, that's, that's fine. And, and so, so you know, the stipulations were the utility easement, right? It was to get the zone change. And then final approval was to be through the administrative officer.
Right, okay.
Which, again, the issue here, it's the same plan. There's, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
I, why it didn't proceed previously, I'm not really sure. It just never went to the town council. But the, the conditions are still the same. And if it came back as preliminary, the conditions would likely be the same.
Yep. So I, I'm just wondering, you know, obviously we have this as a pre-app this evening. So the next steps for the applicant is to go to town council, request the, the lot merging and the zone change. From us, do we need to repeat our previous decisions as a recommendation to the council to?
Well, yeah, so.
Provide that zone change?
Couple, so, so the, I didn't see a recommendation to the council.
Okay.
But I'm, I, I wouldn't. The reinstatement, if they would apply for the reinstatement, the board would grant the reinstatement and they would be free to go to the council. And that's going to be at a, at a future hearing when the application comes in or the application for preliminary. And what I'm saying is, one would just be a reinstatement and one would be a new decision with findings also submitted to the council. It's, it's basically the same.
I, I didn't know if they had to go to the council. Their next step was to go to the council to get the zone change and the lot merging and then come back here for preliminary? Because that was part of the conditions that they get that.
Well, they, so.
To proceed.
Without, without getting into, getting into the weeds.
Sure.
The, the, the prior planner and the planning board granted a preliminary approval. Preliminary approval requires that you find it's compliant with zoning. It's not. I'm, if, if, if the board chooses to do a reinstatement, I am absolutely fine with that because it's the same project and my recommendation would be to approve anyway. But you wouldn't be able to find that it's compliant with zoning.
Sure.
And my recommendation would be, it's not compliant with zoning and final approval is conditional upon a zone change to make it compliant. I don't want to get into the weeds on that, I mean, because it's, it's really just complicating a simple application.
Sure, sure. No, I, I just didn't know if there was anything further beyond giving approval as a letter of recommendation from the planning board to the council that we, even though it's zoned differently, that we found it, you know, we're in agreement with what you're thinking. That this board is, you know, of the same mind that.
You couldn't make that determination tonight because that is not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is a pre-app. So that, that recommendation would either come, it could be, I guess we could address that at the reinstatement.
Yep.
We could, we could, we could do a reinstatement with a, with a request of a referral to the council in support of the zone change. We could do that, or we could just do the.
I think that's how, I, I think, Mr. Carrulo, I think that's how it went. Mr. Kravitz was the plan.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
I, I think that that's how it went and I, I see your point. I mean, one of the, one of the findings has to be that it's compliant. I guess the fact that it was conditional upon the zone, I guess, and that's something I can also discuss with Mr. Igliozzi. You know, as far as, before I waste anyone's time with that, I want to make sure what, what the position's going to be. It would be, again, expedient for us and it would be good for the applicant considering they've been through the process once, you know?
Is the end result going to be the same either way? Because I'm, I'm more concerned with the end result than.
Yeah, no, I, I would say so, sir, yeah.
Meaning, meaning that the, the town land will become part of this parcel and there will be an easement to accommodate utilities.
No, that, that's a good que, that's the question I brought, that, I think that is the operative question with respect to reinstatement, sir. Because what, what, it didn't make it a condition, the, the vote back in '21 didn't make it a condition that the lots merged. It was discussed and that was going to be, what was going to be done. And then, but a condition was for the 20-foot, for the, excuse me, for the utility easement, excuse me.
Right. But it just seems.
That's the one question I had as well is, is because that was part of the discussion, is the reinstatement? And also my question was whether, and I've discussed it with Mr. Igliozzi and with Mr. Carrulo, is whether the reinstatement of the plan then presupposes that the advisory remains the same. So I, I actually have never come across that before, to be honest.
But if, if, it seems like everyone's in agreement that if that sliver of town land was no longer a sliver of town land, it's, it cleans up some loose ends.
It certainly does.
And so certainly from my perspective, I say, we need a process that gets us to that.
Yeah. And maybe.
If there's more than one to get, one way to get there, that's fine.
But alternatively, I, I think, I, that little sliver of land is not going to have any bearing on whether or not we approve this going forward, you know?
Well, other than the, other than the frontage issue.
Well, the front, Mark said the frontage is met on Greenville Road.
Doesn't it solve the, it solves the other problem.
So that's nine and a half feet.
I understand.
You know? So I, I think we're, we're really getting down to a very microscopic level of, of intricacy here. Overall, you know, if this is essentially the same plan that was presented to us in 2021, I still have no issue with it. So, you know, what, that sliver of town-owned land really, for me, has no bearing on whether or not we would approve this.
Oh, I think that's fair. I'm, I'm just saying we should, if we have the opportunity to clean up this loose end, we should do it.
Yeah.
And I think in the context of a reinstatement of, of the previous vote, maybe that's something we have to consider as well. Maybe we can wipe all that out, we come back for reinstatement if we, that's the route we take, maybe we can work something out on that as well. If we know that we can, if we can swap it and the clients are amenable, maybe that makes things smoother for reinstatement as well.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like if you talk, get, you know, get the temperature in the town council about that sliver of land first. And that might, you know, you said, they say, yeah, we should just make this problem go away, then, okay, and then you have a clear path.
I agree. I, I agree, I agree. And if I may, also one thing I forgot to mention, and I should have started out with this. I wanted to offer my sincere apology to the fact that, that, that no, that you were here and no one else was at the last meeting. Completely, 100% my fault, completely. And, I mean, and I got you guys out and, and away from your homes and stuff and I, I really apologize.
It was raining very hard that evening also.
I appreciate you taking ownership of that.
Thank you.
It, it did allow us to set a new record for the shortest meeting in planning board history.
Well, and then I, I was reminded of it when there was no minutes from the last meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should have had seconds from the last meeting.
So. If there are any, any other questions, I think we've probably covered everything, but again, Mr. Carlson is here from Insight. I want him near just in case you had any other questions about the plan.
Thank you. Mark, I think when this applicant comes back, it would be good to have Mr. Igliozzi kind of give us a pro-con list of either doing a reinstatement or just doing a new application. I'm sure that will get vetted out between the two of you, just so we get a really good understanding of, of where we land here. Because again, if this is still the same plan as 2021, I know that the rules have changed for, for this kind of game, but you know, it's still the same thing.
What I would suggest is that the solicitor, the attorney, and myself have a conference call, discuss it. Whatever the outcome of that discussion is, will provide direction for the future. It either be a reinstatement or a new application. I have no objection to either one, I'll be honest with you, and it is the same application. So it's just a matter of getting it back before the board in, in its proper form and then allowing the applicant to proceed to the council. The, the only caveat that I would have is that, you know, if we go back with the reinstatement and the council for some reason does not authorize the acquisition of that property, the resulting subdivision will need a minor, minor dimensional relief.
Right.
If that relief cannot be granted by the building official, and I don't know that it can't, I think that it can, it would, it would have to come back to you.
No, if it was reinstatement, we'd have to go.
Unified plan.
No, but if it was reinstatement, we would no longer be on the unified plan, wouldn't it be the zoning?
You're right. It, it might have to go to, it might have to go back to zoning.
Exactly. That's, that's why, I mean, it's, it is the same project no matter what, but that's why I say if you can maybe informally get a feel for all the town council. It, let's just find the easiest way possible and get rid of the problem.
I think, Mr. Chairman, part of our discussion and in the interim, we, we can, we can both review the statute to see whether that would comply under the modification by the building official. If it does, it becomes a moot point. If it doesn't, that raises that issue.
Well, I mean, that also brings us back to. Well, I mean, that also brings us back to if they need to come back here, they treat it as a new application. We have to give the variance anyways.
Right, yeah.
You know, you're saving yourself a stop at the zoning board, you know, so it's.
Right, so, so it's not clear which one is the most expedient. That's what, that's what I'm hearing. So.
Yeah.
Well, that.
It's all right.
No problem.
Great. Thank you. All right, what's next up? Need help if I had the agenda in front of me. Here we go. Okay, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda, pre-application constant review M and M terminal fuel tank. Mr. Carulo, if you could give us a summary for that?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members, this is, again, a pre-application for an approval of a pre-existing fuel tank that was installed, I think, without a permit, but with the understanding of the building official at the time that he would let the applicant proceed on their own, under their own risk. Then after the fact, issued a notice of violation, it went before the zoning board, multiple applications before the zoning board, multiple hearings. And the zoning board determined because it was a commercial property and other parameters related to a prior approval by the planning board that it could, should come back before the planning board. Now, in the interim, this is, I think this has been going on for over a year. In the interim, again, statutes have changed. So this application coming back before the planning board would come under unified plan review as a development plan review with a special use permit. The property is now under the wellhead protection overlay district. And I believe there are dimensional variances necessary with regard to the sighting of the fuel tank on the, on the rear portion of the property as well as a pre-existing stipulation that the, the, the rear of the property shall remain in its natural state, which obviously no longer exists. So there'll be a presentation and at the end of the day, this will likely be coming back to the planning board, the unified plan review for what I would consider be, to be an accessory use to the principal, which is a trucking company.
So, good evening. My name is Damian Demetrius of Conoco Engineers and Scientists at 4 First Street in Bridgewater, Massachusetts. Uh, here on behalf of my client, Eminem Transportation Services uh, for the project at 44 Railroad Street, as Mark has just described. The Eminem Transportation Terminal is an existing non-conforming transportation terminal building. Um, the project that has occurred was the construction of two concrete fueling pads, a 10,000 gallon Enviro Vault Protected Above Ground Storage Tank for diesel fueling um, as well as some minor septic and lighting improvements. We're in front of the board today as we've, the work has been completed and we are seeking to lawfully permit the completed construction. The existing trucking and transportation property are permitted uses under the manufacturing zoning district. And the above ground storage tank fueling are incidental to the existing trucking and transportation operation and otherwise considered a law, as from my understanding, a lawfully permitted accessory use. So, you know, what I would like to do, you know, as we go through the plans and I just kind of discuss, as Mark has already noted, uh, we will be coming back and submitting an application under the unified plan development review. I'm here to feel at the board and, and see what, you know, the best way for us to move forward and, and how we can kind of make this process, you know, get, get us up and running, what you guys are open to and, and kind of just, you know, work through the process the best we can. So, would you mind page two? All right, so what is presented here up on the plans was a aerial view. Um, we digitized what the site previously looked like. Um, you can see, it's difficult to see, um, uh, you know, but there are grass areas. On the edge of pavement, kind of existed along the property line. Um, and then, you know, this is, this is larger grass area and then the rear of the property where the septic leaching tanks exist was also cleared. You know, landscaped, non-imperious area. It wasn't necessarily nice grassed area or a heavily vegetated wooded area. It was kind of a, you know, bare earth and soil, kind of not, not well kept in that first place. So then on sheet three, this is what the current condition of the site is. Um, as you can see, that landscaped area here has, you know, um, it has been reduced. Um, there is the, you know, and then the rear of the parcel back here has the two fueling pads and then the diesel fuel tank is the shorter rectangle between the two s, not smaller, but more square rectangles. So that was the, you know, improvements to the site. Note that the improved septic system wasn't an increase in design flows. It was an incre, you know, a upgrade, not a new construction. It wasn't to increase flows. It was just, you know, repairing a previously, you know, dis-repaired septic tank. Um, and that, that was done by the contractor and permitted accordingly. So, uh, and then additionally, we, I wanted to note that there has been monitoring wells installed um, for underground groundwater water quality monitoring. Uh, from my understanding, from the testing that has occurred, there are no concerns from the current conditions. But, you know, the existing monitoring wells will let us monitor that as the site progresses in time, as functionality continues, so that we can understand, you know, if there were to be any impacts and, you know, how we can mitigate those if said conditions occurred. So, um, on our proposed plan, so it's in sheet four, um, you can see the hatched area around the rear of the parcel. Uh, that was an extension of the pavement that gone beyond the property line. Uh, that would all be removed. There'd be portions of the paved concrete pads that would also be removed. Uh, the concrete pads themselves would receive positive limiting barriers. Those are the grooves in the pavement that you often see at gas stations. You know, the Jersey barriers that were on the encroaching in butter, those will be adjusted. Um, this is. Sheet four is this proposed? No, this is the demolition sheet, one more sheet. Um, you know, would be adjusted to be on the parcel. Um, so, you know, again, bringing in more of it, you know, we, we recognize where there was encroachments and issues, you know, already going into it, knowing that we're going to need to make some adjustments out there. You know, additional, you know, drainage features we've conceptually added in to improve water quality, to control any type of, you know, issues that would be with the site. We're proposing proprietary water quality units. Um, catch basins deep with deep sumps and hoods to prevent and catch anything. The existing catch basins on our site are just standard small catch basins installed back in 1990s. Um, you know, that don't have any water quality aspects to them. We'll be going in and adding those in to improve for that of the existing conditions. Um, a trench drain with a deep stump along the edges of the concrete pads. Um, and then as already mentioned, a water quality unit to help treat, you know, most likely some Vor Technics type unit that will, you know, remove sediment and oils and, you know, anything that would occur from the site. So, you know, from a water quality standpoint, there would be improvements for the proposed design. Again, conceptually, wanted to talk with you guys on how we move forward and the best process, but this is where we stand with what we would like to do moving forward. So what that brings us to now is would be the requested relief for the conditions of the site. You know, as Mark had noted, that there was stipulations to the site from a 1995 zoning board decision for the project. You know, upon my client's purchase of the property, they didn't, they were not aware of these at the time. Um, you know, and they went forward with the construction of this as such. Um, you know, these included screening, impervious limitations on the site of the such. Um, you know, it was a misunderstanding. So we're looking, you know, before we proceed with any of that would be, you know, first making sure that we can get those stipulations, you know, how the board would feel about those. You know, that after those stipulations, you know, we understand the board's belief that we could get relief from that. We would, um, again, the extended practical, the authorization or relief to authorize the accessory features constructed on site, the above ground storage tank and the concrete fueling pads. Again, I, you know, from our understanding, those are lawfully constructed, you know. I believe, uh, Mark had mentioned that there was a potential for a setback relief necessary as an accessory use. They are outside of the 10-foot setback. Uh, note that the cross, the site is a not, existing non-conforming property. I think the, the required building setback is 40 feet. The bit, the lot itself isn't 40 feet wide. You know, so we can't, so, so, you know, that's existing non-conforming. Those things, it's a, it's a small lot. It's, you know, slightly more than a third of an acre. You know, uh, so there's only so much space there. So, once we have on that, uh, get that, then, um, you know, and then the understanding of how we can control our stormwater flows. So that would be the relief discussed there. So, purpose of our feedback, as I discussed, is to get the current, you know, with the current design, what is in front of you? What are you guys comfortable with? Where, you know, where do I want to proceed with our design? Stormwater drainage, what are you guys accepting there? Um, you know, but before we go forward with anything else, again, it's, you know, prior to finalizing and, and asking for relief from that, we have to understand, you know, get the relief from the previous stipulations. Again, misunderstanding of a 30-year-old decision. Currently note that, you know, we have not received any outside objections. Um, you know, the, the property is within a zoning district. The, he, the client has worked with the butter that is adjacent to the property. The other butter is a, you know, decommissioned railroad on the other side. So, you know, there, there's no one that is, you know, I, we're not reducing buffer zone to a residential area. We're not, we're not causing any harm that, you know, is foreseen from anyone at this point in time. And the work was, you know, um, so I guess we'll open it back to the board with that, you know, and that, then we'll jump into the preceding concerns, I guess.
Anyone have any questions, comments on this?
Are your above-ground concrete vaults state of the art for this day and age?
Uh, yes, from my understanding and, and the people I've worked with, you know, again, not a designer of them, but they, they can, um, it's above ground, it's in a concrete vault, it's an Enviro tank. Um, they, they have all of the, as far as I know, bells and whistles to alarm in the, you know, event of a spill. And I'm, you know, it, it's encased in, I believe in a concrete, you know, facility. It, it's a, it's a rather secure structure. It, it was, I believe, very expensive to install.
Has your client had any unfavorable releases since he's been there?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is, I don't think there's any fuel in the tank, is there?
There's currently no fuel in the tank. It is, is, no.
They, they've never had, they've never.
Yeah.
Put fuel in the tank.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Change it the whole.
So no, there hasn't been any fuel released from the empty tank.
All right, so that sort of implies that there's still a process to go through in terms of perhaps putting some fuel in it, make sure it doesn't leak and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
So it hasn't been fully tested.
Yeah, well, we, you know, the client had constructed the site in its entirety and upon getting finding building permits and approval from the fire department, you know, these issues of, of the permitting process and, and who, that's where that came up. And that's where we, we, you know, he was halted and prevented from, you know, the, putting fuel on the tank.
Right, okay. Mr. Menard?
So the question I have is the building official that is currently in place, was that the building official that was there when this project was started?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dr. Roberts.
Um, I don't know if this is for Mark, but I just want to understand. When you were giving the context behind why this exists and why there's the application, I, I don't understand why it was built. Like, I wrote down that the pre-existing fuel tank, that a building official allowed them to proceed at their own risk.
So, so the prior owner, not the current owner, because this property transacted in the interim, started to install the fuel tank or installed the fuel tank under a prior building official, two building officials ago. When the new building official came in, they actually were applying for the permit. He rejected the permit. They had already started the project. At that time, they provided to him a letter saying, we would like to proceed at our own risk and continue to install with the understanding that we would go to zoning at a subsequent, subsequent approval. He allowed that to happen. They went to zoning. The project had been before zoning for a substantial amount of time and at least three or four separate zoning hearings. I believe they withdrew, I'm not really sure, but I believe the applicant voluntarily withdrew from zoning and decided to come before the planning board.
So under perfect circumstances, would this have been a more linear, like you don't proceed until you have permission?
Under perfect circumstances, if the prior owner would have applied for the building permit prior to initiating construction, those issues should have been addressed and resolved.
But this is sitting there empty. How, how long has it been sitting there empty?
I did have a timeline. The construction, site was completed in 20, spring of 2023.
Okay, so I thought.
Yeah, because I just want to say my, my concern, it's not actually about this exact situation. But it makes me concerned that other businesses would be like, oh, we can just do what we want and then get permission later. So I just want to name that because that makes me uncomfortable. And it's like, once something so vast and expensive and huge is already in place, it's not likely that people will be like, no, you can't have this permission. But I don't want that to be a trend in our community. That concerns me a lot.
Mark, you said that.
You said this is in the water overlay district?
Yeah, so, again, so when the project was started, this property was exempted from the overlay district. Subsequently, the overlay district was reinstated for this area the tank was in. However, it was not a permitted use and not a permitted tank. So today, when they apply, and I've had this conversation with the engineer, we have different standards than we would have yesterday, right?
Right.
That's why he's going through this litany of discussion about installing new catch basins and drainage and upgrading the system to address the watershed protection overlay district requirements. Because I don't believe that the improvements that are being presented here have been implemented yet. I'm not sure.
Well.
So that the pre-existing condition, I believe on sheet four is what exists and what's being proposed on sheet five and six. No, on sheet five is the resolution to the existing condition to bring it as in compliance as it can possibly be brought to meet the current standard. Because clearly the lot, right, is pre-existing non-conforming. And, you know, paving from property line to property line wouldn't be something that would be authorized today. But, I mean, in order for the, the, the site to function, that's a necessity. And I believe the concrete pads do not have the catchment as it exists, as they exist today. They're just flat pads.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I drove out there and actually
Yeah.
tried to pull my car around. It was kind of difficult. I assume they'll be backing the trucks in because, so it's a very tight site.
So this was built without doing like real planning? I mean, it wasn't.
I can't, I can't comment on why and how it was built.
You know, the, the, the water runoff, you know, where the, where the catch basins, all this kind of stuff. And, and there aren't any prior, you know, so when they built this three years ago, they didn't do those kinds of plans. So you're retrofit, you're, you're, the attempt now is to retrofit it as if it was done back then.
To the greatest extent practical.
Which really means in some cases, perhaps some level of demolition and rebuilding.
Yeah. This, this engineering firm was not involved in the original installation. All of this is coming after the fact.
Lucky you.
That, that's, that's my biggest concern is that you're not 100% sure on what the existing conditions are. You know, you, have you done cores in the existing concrete pads? You know, what's the condition underneath the fuel tank that has been previously installed? Or do you know that information?
I guess clarify, what, from what extent are you concerned with the existing, you know, immaterial that was beneath it?
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, they have. Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if, you know, they had a set of drawings that say, okay, this is supposed to be a, just for generic terminology, this is a six-inch concrete slab and they only poured three inches, you know, something like that. And although, and now you're working to modify some existing conditions that, that I, I don't, I'm not sure if you've fully confirmed what is in, isn't that makeup of those concrete slabs? And what that fuel, what's underneath that fuel tank, you know? It has, you, you, you don't have a hundred percent knowledge of what's that existing condition is.
So, to that extent, the concrete pads and stuff of that, the contractor that did that work, um, you know, took a lot of photos, has all the information. Um, those were pads that, um, came with the envi, you know, were specked out per the envi, enviro tank for the use of that structure, um, and how those were to exist there. Um, we have had, you know, um, my, myself, and not personally knowledgeable, I'm not going to go out and say that I individually know, but, uh, from my understanding, those are properly designed and constructed concrete pads. Um, you know, and there's the additional design and, you know, we, we do have, and I don't think it was submitted in this, um, you know, as we would be, you know, supplying it in the next act, actual application, um, additional, um, letters from other, you know, engineers who are more associated with the design of slabs and, you know, and the use for, um, these, um, for fueling and, and things of those extent.
No, I, I've just been a, a part of a number of projects where we get existing drawings and then we go to fi, go to the existing conditions and that's not what's reflected in the drawings.
Yeah, that's right.
So, I just want to make sure, be, because we're in such a, 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 a highly scrutinized overlay district here, that we are a hundred percent sure of what's, what's existing now and, and that we are confident that there will not be any sort of, uh, breaches or anything like that. Because even if there, you know, even if there's a crack somewhere in the slab on the underside, you know, that's, that could grow, you don't know about it, you don't see it. And then all of a sudden, we have an issue on our hands. Um, so that, that's, that's my biggest concern is that, you know, we have existing conditions. Again, and, and maybe it's just because I'm jaded that I have had with existing conditions drawings that, um, I, I just don't fully trust them all the time.
And, and we've had some fairly recent projects that we've reviewed, which, which involve fuel and, and proper containment, you know, you know, when there's a spill, all that kind of stuff. And to Mister Carillo's point about the slabs having that, those, uh, those grates that you see.
Positive limiting barrier.
Right, so if, if those are not there, don't you have to dig up the slab to do it? Because there has to be a containment area underneath the slab to get that or, or something for runoff?
Yeah, no, so the positive limit is the grooves within the pavement. Um, those are designed to hold a certain volume of an initial spill, right? So, if a guy's, you know, currently fueling his, his, you know, and, and leaks out a little bit or, you know, he, he drops the hose or drives away with the hose, that will catch the fuel that would be within that, right? Um, so that would control, like, tho, those are the grooves around. And then that would all drain into what, you know, are, so in theory, he would assume, as he notices, any, any type of spillage would be cleaned up. That's what they're designed as professionals to do, right? Clean it up, they'll have the, um, the booms, they'll, you know, throw down the, the dirt, they'll, they'll get it cleaned up instantaneously. Anything that would run off from that would then be captured into the drainage system in which we are proposing the trenches and everything like that, right? So, none of that is currently, you know, um, the trench drain that sends it to the water quality unit and any of that. The previous site conditions, which it was a transportation terminal and, you know, all of that stuff did not exist. So, we are proposing an improvement to a previous existing drain, condition for the drainage and the water quality that would come off of the site.
Because I just, and, you know, I'm thinking of the, um, the project that we recently talked about with the, the gas station and all that kind of stuff. And there's been, there's some substantial, um, infrastructure, I'll say, underground to capture this kind of stuff, and that's what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, I, I think the one you might be referring to, Mister Chairman, on, on Eddie Dowling?
Yes.
Those were underground storage tanks?
Well, no, I'm thinking of the, uh, the gas station, um, south of, uh,
On one forty-six?
The drive-in, yes.
Yeah. Similar, those were underground storage tanks?
Well, yeah, but it was, it was really for the spillage when people are pumping fuel and all that. It's, it's really that.
So, the, the, those, I was surprised to understand how much fuel those grooves will ca, it's gallons. I, I don't know exactly.
I think it needs to be.
How many gallons, but it's several gallons
Yeah.
of fuel that would be contained by those grooves. And then that could be either vacuumed up or cleaned up or absorbed with booms, as he's saying. That's in, that's an initial catchment. Um, and then the, the tank would have a warning mechanism as well as a shut-off.
Right.
So that when that comes off, the tank shuts off and no more fuel comes out.
Right.
So, the fuel that was in the hose or whatever got deposited on the ground would be caught, caught
Yeah, I'm, I'm
fully cleaned up.
To be honest, I'm sure that, you know, that these are prefabricated tanks and all that.
Yes.
I'm less concerned about the tank itself, um, and more with, you know, the guy drops the hose, doesn't, doesn't shut it off correctly, drives away and now it's just sitting out there pumping fuel.
Right.
It's going to be a lot of gallons potentially before someone notices. And then to Mister Porter's point, you know, what's underneath all this, you know?
Right, no, I understood.
That's, that's where the concern is. And obviously, you didn't build it, it's not, you're, it's your, it's your job to fix, but not to, you know, I guess that, that, to Mister Porter's point about the current existing conditions and what you'll be able to do to mitigate it. You may, you may discover stuff underneath that changes your project, which maybe is all the stuff you have to do prior to coming back to us. I don't know.
So, I'm still trying to understand what the concern is with the, with the condition underground. So, you know, with it being paved or, you know, it, it's often called, you know, capped at this point in time. So, if, if there was anything that was to leak out of that, right? All of that is no longer being, you know, transported through groundwater because the surface now has an impervious layer over it. So, if there was any, if you're concerned about contaminants or anything to that extent, then
Contaminants and.
You know, what, what has occurred would prevent some of that.
Well, contaminants and settlement, I mean, it's these, obviously, when the tank is full, it's going to weigh a lot more than it does right now and the, the weight of the trucks loaded, whether, whether the underground, uh, the, the base, sure, the pad itself may be fine. What's it sitting on?
Understood, okay, so that, that is more your concern. All right, so then that was, you know, again, the environmental thing, not done under my, you know, direction or something to that extent, but, you know, um, those were submitted to, you know, from the environmental, um, enviro tank company, the manufacturer. Uh, from my understanding, the contractor worked with them to, you know, properly set the tank based off of loadings and, and what would be required, you know, as far as a concrete pad. They, you know, again, it's not, we're not, uh, you know, um, Joe Smo landscaper, you know, just coming in and put, you know, it's a, it's a large, you know, manufact, you know, M and M Transportation, you know, they're, you, they're here. They're not going in and just setting a tank, you know, and, on top of the surface and saying, "Okay, we're going to fuel out of this." It, it's a, it's a pretty competent system.
Yeah, but, and, and you, it sounds like what you're saying is that we'll learn a lot more at the next phase because you'll have that documentation of the, all that information from the, the company that actually did the site preparation and building. Because, you, you know, it's one thing to say, "Okay, they actually did do a six-inch pad, just like they're supposed to." But is it on sand? Is it on gravel? I mean, what's it on? You know, that's.
What's, what's the condition?
Yeah.
From my understanding of the previous test pits and from the contractor that was out there, that, uh, the material out there is, is Title V beautiful sand. It, it is one of the best, you know, material. They, they want to quarry the giant hill that runs next to it, you know? Uh, because that, the material is, uh, of course.
Right, okay.
Part, part of the, the other concern is because you, you do have such a tight lot here, you know, you can only control what's on your lot. You, you can't control what's going on at the railroad bed. So, say tho, those grooves now get filled up and the, the, it slopes down towards the, the railroad. You know, once you, you know, have a breach and it's overflowing and, you know, I, I understand I'm, I'm probably catastrophize, catastrophizing a little bit here, but it, I'm just, when it comes to situations like this, I want to make sure that we are, that there's no room for mistake here.
Right.
Because then otherwise, you know, all of that fuel is going to start running into the Branch River going downhill.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that, that's, that's really, uh, my biggest concern. Um, the other, the other thing I, the other concern I see, looking at this, these plans, is it looks like you have bollards right close to the fuel tank, but you also have your neighbor parking right up against that lot line. And I, I get concerned that, you know, somebody can pick up enough speed and then you're, you're into that, into that fuel tank regardless of the bollard, so.
On that line, you know, I was just looking at that with Ariel. I couldn't tell whether there are other bollards separating the parking spaces or it's just like, you know, curb bumps, you know?
Right, so it, it seems like it might be worthwhile to put a, you know, a couple more layers of protection, so, because I know that they have trucks going back and forth, they have, uh, if that's going to be the parking that they have existing, that, you know, let's try to make sure we're protected from all sides. Um, you know, almost taking the manufacturer's recommendations for that fuel tank, but, you know, maybe, uh, adding a little bit more just for, for those protections because of the, the conditions of the lot.
Yeah, and again, and again, as Mister Carlo pointed out, because it's so tight, will it be backing in? And again, if they make a mistake while they're backing in, it, there's not a lot of room for error, so I think, and I think this is kind of what you're saying, is really tightly enclosing that whole area, you know, to, to make sure if there is a problem, it stays there.
Okay.
All right, so.
As far, can I just add to that too, just because of the, you know, the proximity to, from the tank to where they're backing into? Um, you know, worst-case scenario, if somebody was to back into the tank and cause it to spill, is the, is there, does the plan include, like, catch basins that would be able to, to absorb, catch the, the volume of fuel that would be stored in that tank?
Um, so, the tank itself is a double-walled tank, uh, with, with, you know, leak prevention and all of that. Um, it, uh, I'm, again, not a professional on the exact tank, but I understand it, you know, it, it's, it's, you know, Enviro Vault is the name of the tank. It, it is a vault, um, you know, it, 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 concrete encased, from my understanding, large steel. Um, it would take a lot of effort, um, for them to puncture through that and then it, you know, and, and then it would turn into a spill catastrophe, right? DEP would be called, there, there would be a significant amount of, you know, other people outside of standard, you know, planning and, and that would further clean up of that in which the client would be responsible for all of, you know, right? Again, and that, that is, you know, like, we don't want to catastrophize that, as stated by, you know, um, Mister Porter, you know? It, it, that I understand that we could potentially have that.
No.
Um, catch basins and, and things of that extent, you know, they do hold larger volumes of oil and everything like that. That would instantaneously be cleaned up, you know, as quickly as possible, um, you know, to prevent any type of spillage from there, you know? Um, catch basins also, you know, they have the sumps, but those are filled with water, right? So, that, from an extent, you can't, you can't plan for the infinite, you know, for, for an airplane to come in and crash into it, you know, per se. And I, I don't want to minimize what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I, I, you know, again, to an extent, we have to play within the regulations that require, um, from my understanding, you know, the, the tank has been designed in place per those regulations. You know, we're here for.
What is in, in, in terms of the bollards, we, you know, in the satellite photo? You can see the bollards on one side of the tank, I assume they're on the other side of the tank as well. But what is on the, you know, as Miss Ram was saying, if someone's backing in and they just totally miss and they actually, they're going towards what, you know, the front, what I'll call the front of the tank, right? The, the, the side of the tank that's on the Providence Pike side, that, what is there to protect that? To protect the tank itself?
So, so the fuel, uh, you know, I, I, again, the fueling tank itself, um, you know, there are the bollards and the bollards are actually at the front between of a fueling pad. It's hard to see on these plans and the other plans.
So, are there bollards on three sides? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there are bollards on all three sides and, and along the front, there's also the fueling, like, meter, um, that's out front as well. So, they, they would have to get through all of that, you know, it's not like they're going to.
Just back in.
Yeah, yeah, there, there are other warnings or poke yokes to, you know, prevent them.
What's the volume of the fuel tank?
Ten thousand gallons.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm going to ask. It's a double-walled tank. What is, the, the, the protective outer tank is steel?
Yes.
And the inner tank also steel or fiberglass?
Yes.
Yes, what?
I, 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 I maybe clarified.
Are they both steel tanks? One steel tank or inside another steel tank? Or fiberglass enclosed in a steel cam?
Um, I will not, you know, I don't know exactly, again, the, the specifications of the tank. You know, we can provide that, more information, it's on, you know, again, port first of the pre-act meeting. Um, I can definitely make sure I have more knowledge on that information going into our next application.
With, with the questioning I've been hearing, I think the concern is, if you have a ten-thousand-gallon tank, the expectation is you can capture ten-thousand gallons. So, come back with a, a solution for that and we'll be all happy.
That makes it simple. That, that, that makes it simple. You're right.
Summed it up.
But I think that also speaks to, to what we were talking about before, is really enclosing the perimeter of the area. Because that would help in the terms of,
Yeah.
you know, catastrophic, you know?
Mister Carillo, would it be appropriate to mention a previous project where we put a special requirement on the fuel tanks?
That you are prerogative, it wouldn't be inappropriate.
Okay. Uh, we had a situation where they want to put underground tanks and they're very close to sensitive water bodies. And it was suggested that a tertiary containment is possible with a bladder underground that would be able to contain the, the total volume. So, you may research that if you wish.
So, a tertiary containment for the.
Going to be a big bladder, underground bladder.
To, to collect anything that were to spill, um, would be collected into a, you know, a separate storage tank, is, is underground. Um, okay.
Anything else from anyone? Doctor Roberts?
I, it's kind of an overall comment. Again, I just want to point out that, um, I'm glad that the standards are higher because the land and the aquifer have not changed in the last few years. It's just the regs that have, and it's preferable to have better protection for our water overlay districts. So, I'm just naming that because many residents in our community are extremely concerned about our aquifer and our water, um, overlay. And we have a history in our community of contaminated water, so we're very concerned about this as a community.
Thanks. What, what is that, just a curious, so what is the applicant doing now for refueling? Where are they doing that?
Um, they do it at, at, at a site, you know, further away. Um, and that, that's, you know, this, the use of this would prevent additional travel of the trucks.
Right, right.
You're, you know, and so, you know, um, I've heard, yeah, claims that, you know, it, it would significantly reduce the, you know, off-site distances um, at which the trucks would have to, you know, make their pit stops.
Because they only took over this property a few years ago.
Yeah.
Because it was railroad property, right? That office, the office building and all that was part of the, uh, a long time, yes, yeah.
Yeah, um, I'm not completely clear on that history component. I know my client, um, I believe purchased, um, you know, the property back in, you know, twenty twenty-two, I believe, ourselves.
That sounds about right, yeah.
So.
Anything else? Anyone? I think you, I think you heard our concerns and recommendations, so.
Yeah, so, so I, I would just like to, before we close it out, ju, just kind of confirm again the relief and an understanding from the board at which, you know, again, tho, those initial stipulations, right, from my understanding, my perception here, is that that, that is something the board is amenable to. Um, you know, the, the impervious, the impact of the previous site from the previous stipulations, that the board is amenable to granting some relief from that. Um, then secondarily, that, you know, the use of the tank on site, again, amenable given, um, the installation of protective features a, and the improvements to the sites that we've proposed and discussed about here. Um, you know, so, is that accurate? Am I making an accurate say that you're amenable?
As long as, as long as it includes the, what sounds like the, uh, the additional, addressing the, the concerns that we had as part of that.
Okay, yep, understood.
Which I understand you haven't drawn the plan, fully drawn the plan yet, so.
Yeah, 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 and that, that's, you know, again, it was coming in with these conceptual plans, the drainage design, the components of that are, are, are still in flux. And, and again, tho, those initial stipulations, right? If I can't get past those, then, you know, that's, that's where, you know, then there's no point in me going with that continued designs.
I think Doctor Benoit gave you the specific, simple. I think Dr. Benoit gave you the specific, simple sentence that can drive the design. And if you meet that, I don't, I don't think we're going to have any problems.
Okay.
So, there you go.
Okay. Um, and then, so then with the, you know, the last of the conditions, you know, that, um, you know, with all those said, again, very tight site, a small amount of imperv, you know, it, I believe the additional impervious on the lot was, uh, 6,500 roughly square feet. Um, trying to get, you know, the net zero increase to stormwater runoff, you know, is, is somewhat de minimis, uh, you know, is, is of a smaller value. Um, you know, making things work in that extent for, you know, the control of peak fate of road flows. Um, you know, what is the board's amenability to things like that, right? I'm going to do the best I can to make it that, but again, we're, we're in a, you know, a tighter situation.
Understood. I, I, I think, again, Dr. Benoit's suggestion about the, um, the, the kind of the third level of containment, the underwater bladder is, is a very good one.
Okay.
Um, because that can have, that can have some serious capacity. And it might, it might make, might actually be easier than trying to like, you know, build this thing into an above-ground swimming pool that can capture 10,000 gallons of fuel, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Well, the stormwater overflow, would that be something that would be caught in those divots, if you will, that, you know, within the pads that you'd be installing?
So, so, I mean, tho, those are only for small, you know, releases of gas, right? The, the stormwater overflow, that, you know, what, what we're running up against with. And we, we've had a conversation with DEP about the project already. Um, you know, we would not need to file with them for the current project i, if you guys were to simply approve us, right? You know, they, they, they've looked at the site. There's nothing. We're not within a wetland resource area. Um, we're not, uh, impacting more than an acre of land. Um, and currently, there is no proposed underground infiltration or underground injection, um, you know, wells for the site, right? So what we have to do with the stormwater design is do, you know, maintain the property, um, you know, to the grace of, without having, you know, um, without meeting any of those three thresholds, right? And that, that, you know, would allow us, within the town standards, the, it's the peak rate of flows off, you know, often with underground infiltration. We don't necessarily want to do that with the flow, you know, with, um, the use of the property, you know, fuel, you know, truckings are industrial area, um, injecting stuff into the ground. You know, we, we want to do it on the surface, but we're limited by, again, the smallness of the site and the amount of impervious i, is, you know, de minimis, is very hard to make up for the, the, the very minute amount of flow. So, you know, again, we'll come back with the best design we happily have and just wanted to kind of understand, um, the board's amenability, um, you know, to potential relief from those as well.
Okay. All right. I think we're good.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Last item on the agenda here. Oh, there it is. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is the administrative subdivision informational purpose. So if, um, if you I, I assumed it was Bobby.
That's the name of the owner, Oleg.
Ah, Swedish.
We just, we just call it the Oleg subdivision, but anyway. Um, pretty simple. He went from two lots to three lots.
Okay.
Um, is there a good reason? I don't remember.
So, just, under the new standard, up to, prior to July, up to five lots would be approved administratively, as would have prior, have come to the planning board for a minor subdivision. This is a minor subdivision using two lots to create a third conforming lot. So the two pre-existing lots with homes on them will be conforming. In the third lot, which is in the middle, which is a 45,000 square foot lot, little over an acre, um, will also be a conforming lot.
Oh, so proper frontage and all that kind of stuff and?
Has appropriate frontage, lot width and area.
And it, and it doesn't have the little flagstick thing you like to avoid. So it's nice.
So while they're defined as minors, they're actually reviewed administratively.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, anything on that? If not, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
We have a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No?